Get right into the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item two is to approve the minutes of May 19th, May 21st, May 24th, May 26th, and June 6th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion is second. Any comments? Nope. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Announcements, Ms. Cassavette, you've had one thing?
Oh, sure. I was not prepared to start, but I will. So I just wanted to announce to the community that the Rotary Club has sponsored a community fridge. And as this board graciously offered to allow it to be housed over by the senior center, right outside the side door of the senior center. And it's open. It is now a community fridge. And so there's a Facebook group that is responsible for the coordination of the community fridge. You can find it. It's called the Shrewsbury Community Fridge. And it is a take what you need and give what you can model, which means that anyone is able to access the fridge and the pantry 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to take food if they are in need of food and to donate food if they need food. And so I hope that lots of members of the community will check it out. It's already gotten a ton of use and we're really excited to have it here for everyone in Shrewsbury, whether you work here, live here, or are just passing through to be able to have access to food.
Great. It looks good, too. That shed around.
That was a community member, Phil Blumberg, that created and did the building of that shed. And it does look beautiful. He donated his time.
Yeah, it's very clean. It looks good. Okay. The reason I asked you if you want to go first is that you didn't even have to wait until the end of this. So I have a few items. On the fire department, first responders received the Shrewsbury History Award from the Shrewsbury Historical Society. The award's given to a person or organization that chose a record of outstanding leadership service to the community. That occurred on Saturday morning, so noted. Next thing, announcement, this is really like a wrap-up of what happened this weekend. After a two-year hiatus, the Kids Equipment Day was back and well-attended by over 500 people at the municipal highway garage on South Street. Children received a construction hat or a fire hat, instruction bracelets, DigSafe bags with handouts on recycling yardways, town parks, and DigSafe information. I like the DigSafe information for the kids. I'd like to see how they would use that. Residents brought donations to condiments and paper goods to help stuff a truck. The donations were delivered to St. Anne's Human Services Food Pantry. Stuff a Truck is an initiative of the New England Public Works Association. The second year that Shrewsbury's been participating in that. Children, young and old, sign their name on one of the snow plows that'll be on display all year at the municipal garage. Preschoolers and middle schoolers participated in the name a plow contest. Youth were able to create a name for one of the eight frontline plow trucks. And DPWs in the process of notifying the winners. Staff from DPW, including Highway Engineering, Parks and Recreation, along with the Fire Department and the Police Department, were in attendance. And nice to have it back after that long hiatus. Okay. Start a little, hopefully, a tradition. Thought it would be nice to welcome in new employees and thank employees as they retire. So the first list is a little bit long, but just bear with me. Since April 14th, the town has welcomed many employees. The first from the Public Buildings Division is Mike Valani, Junior Building Custodian. Aleor Flores Alaredo, Junior Building Custodian. Zachary Baldino, Junior Building Custodian from Parks and Rec. Jared Wiegren, an equipment operator. Mark Schofield, seasonal laborer. Benjamin Bell, boat ramp attendant from the library. Dana Volk, library technology specialist from the Highway Division. Jason Sushi, Special Equipment Operator from the Engineering Department. Todd Baldwin, he's a senior engineer. And from the manager's office, Julie Turney. Is that how you say it?
Turney.
Turney. Assistant to the Town Manager, Systems Business Analyst. And finally, we said goodbye to Jean Giles, who worked in the Department of Public Works for almost 29 years. And she left the first week in June, so we wish her luck in her retirement. Okay, any other announcements? Okay. Mr. Mizikar, tell me.
Good evening, board members. Board members and members of the public, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Avery Krasnikowski. Avery's interning with Town Manager Board Selectman's Office for the first few months or first few weeks of the summer. Avery is a rising senior at Marionapolis Academy and a Shrewsbury resident and interested potentially in exploring local government as a career field. So we're happy to have her join in a bunch of meetings and other work within our office over the next few weeks. So welcome, Avery. I also wanted to recognize and acknowledge the ceremony that was held on June 9th by CMRPC, through which Chairman DePaula received a Service Award for his contributions to the MPO, on which he served for over 15 years. I don't know if we decided how long.
Eighteen years.
It was eighteen years. So congratulations on that award. It was a very nice event that evening. And then just a heads-up to residents. And we're going to be providing more information over the coming months. But the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is issuing a mattress disposal ban, which means we'll no longer be able to collect mattresses at the curbside through curbside collections. We're exploring other opportunities to be able to provide these services to residents. We do know that it is one of the most popular bulky waste items that gets placed at the curb with over, almost 700 mattresses during the last year. So we'll work with DPW and the Trash and Recycling Coordinator, once we have that person on board, to hopefully find a solution for that. But all mattresses of reasonable condition will need to be fully recycled, which is, makes it a trash or waste ban, again, starting November 1st. So additional information will be coming on that. I'll move into the COVID report.
Sure.
If there's anything, nothing else. So we don't, we did not receive data on June 10th. There's a reporting issue at the state level. I'm very pleased to report that the week prior, ending June 3rd, there was only 77 cases of town residents, which is just about half of the week prior to that. So we're definitely on a really solid downward trend now with those three consecutive weeks of declining numbers. We'll provide the community with another update on this Friday through our conventional means and do a press release. So, but it looks like we're, once again, heading in a good direction with COVID numbers.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Are we doing this next one virtual? Next item?
What's that? I'm sorry? Yeah, we're, we asked to take number seven out of order. If we could go there next, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Item seven is to review and act to reorganize particular town departments.
So I'm just going to present my screen. So in accordance with the Town Manager Act, the Town Manager is responsible with recommending an organizational structure that is confirmed or considered and confirmed by the Board of Selectmen. And as we've worked closely together over, throughout at least the last six, but probably longer months into the fall, as we started the budget process, there was a couple of things that we implemented, starting effective July 1, that we wanted to circle back with on the board and request your formal approval to the official organization chart of the community. So this is the current organization chart, our basic high-level structure that identifies all departments and senior management team. Tonight, we're going to focus on some changes within the areas that I'll highlight on every screen within the Department of Public Works and Community Development and Human Services. First area that we want to focus on is within the Department of Public Works. Currently, we operate through a public facilities division, which oversees three diverse missions, including the management of all public buildings, recreational activities, including program, events and activities, and parks and cemetery operations. And as we've discussed throughout the budget process, we feel there's a primary challenge with recreation not being its own standalone department and kind of being buried within the Department of Public Works. It's clearly a aspect of our operations that's very public-facing and has not so much to do with infrastructure and other Department of Public Works things. So we're seeking to make this change of moving recreation out and creating a standalone department in, starting in the next fiscal year. So that move would, would take it from within the Department of Public Works and create, again, a standalone department, which you see near the center of the screen, falling under the umbrella of Community Development and Human Services. So Ms. Snell, Angela Snell, who's served as the Public Facilities Superintendent, would be moving to take the Recreation, Parks and Recreation Director position and continuing to build out on her good work in those areas. And I guess restoring and building on programs and activities through a completely new department on July 1st. So the other change that we look to make within the Department of Public Works is the establishment of the Fleet Management Division, which is highlighted in blue on the screen. So you'll notice that the Public Facilities Division no longer exists. And Public Buildings and Cemetery and Parks Division is created as direct reports underneath the Department of Public Works Director. And the Fleet Management Division is included in the budget proposal for this year and becomes its own standalone division, although we've been operating in that structure from about the middle of the prior, or the current fiscal year, fiscal year '22. So those are the primary changes that we're seeking to make, which obviously impact both the Department of Public Works and the creation of a new Recreation Department within the Community Development and Human Services aspect of the organization. So happy to answer any questions. Ms. Snell, Mr. Howlander here this evening as well, if you have any questions. But we would look for the board to consider the departmental changes that I've laid out this evening.
So, so part of these changes is really splitting departments into different functional areas, right?
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? No? Yes, no? I think, I think they make sense. I think having the focus on, if I understand it right, the recreation position that Ms. Snell will have now is going to focus primarily on the activities. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, programs and activities and events.
Which kind of stretched to do, I think, in the past. So I think that'll be good. It's one of the things that.
Would also include the permits, you know, like the sports group, the boat ramp permits, things like that as well.
Yep. Yeah. And you was kind of stretched then in that area before, so. And I know that's one of the things that people talked about wanting more of, so. I think you'll be busy. I think you'll have more to do, Mr. Howlander.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Kind of made me think of a question when you mentioned the boat ramp. So does that mean that you'll still maintain that role overseeing the activity that takes place on the ramps with Lake Quinzigman? And then also your role on the Lake Quinzigman Commission? Like, is that staying?
Yeah, so I will still oversee the boat ramp.
Angela, do you want to? Do you want to come up here real quick?
Thank you.
So the Parks and Recreation Department would still oversee the boat ramp, the operations, selling the tickets, the boat ramp attendance. But then if there's something related to maintenance, we would work with the Parks Maintenance Division. But the fees, you know, any expenses would still get charged to the boat ramp. So we'd still be working together for a lot of these things. It's just that the maintenance part would remain in DPW. And then the programming, you know, the scheduling of the events, things like that. The Parks Commission, the Lake Commission, I would still work with them.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, no? Okay. So do you need a vote?
Yes, please.
To accept the organizational changes as you presented?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. Okay. Now are we back to item six? Okay. And we're virtual on this, right? Congratulations, Angela.
The Water Parks Commission.
Lucky you. So are they on what?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you. There you go. Good evening. Did, would you like to introduce yourself and then we'll get started?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Gene Richard. I'm the attorney for the applicant Price Chopper Operating Co., Company of Massachusetts, Inc. With me, I believe, is Chris Lawson, who is the proposed on-premises manager. And I believe also Zone Director James Carlson Jr., who I suspect is the 508 number in the telephone. We are here today to request approval for three matters, two of them really related, one not so related. There was a merger of Price Chopper supermarkets with Tops Markets recently. And that's led to just a couple of changes in officers and directors of the licensed entity of the supermarket. And, and also a whole new set of stockholders, namely, the shareholders in Tops Markets have joined the shareholders of the existing shareholders for Price Chopper. And both of those matters, we would ask for your approval. And I'll specify, get a little more specific in just a moment. And then, as I said, we are requesting approval for a change of store manager. And that's something that happens, you know, in the usual course. I don't think it's related to the merger at all. So in terms of the officers and directors of the licensed entity, Blaine Bringhurst is replacing Scott Grimmett as president. Jody Plonsky has been named the Vice President, not replacing anyone. That's a new position. And then Frank Kersey is replacing Neil Goll as Director. And again, that's for the, the operating entity of Price Chopper Operating Co. of Massachusetts, Inc. Now, turning to the, the change of ownership, it all relates to the merger. Both entities, namely, Price Chopper and Tops Markets, are now owned in common. The corporate structure is, is in the application documents that you have. But basically, there is a new joint parent company named Northeast Grocery, Inc. So that, Northeast Grocery, Inc., owns the two, the two supermarket entities, not directly, but ultimately. And so, as I said, all of the stockholders that used to be Tops Markets stockholders are now folded into Northeast Grocery Incorporated, as are all of the old stockholders of, of what was the Goll Corporation Company, which is now, Goll Corporation, excuse me, which is now into Northeast Grocery, Inc. So combined, that, I'm, I'm sorry. Did someone have a question?
No, I just cleared my throat.
Oh, okay. Combined, that amounts to just under 300 individuals and entities who are now stockholders, including the old stockholders of Price Chopper, which have not changed, and the new, the, the old stockholders of Tops Markets, which are now in the structure as partial owners of Price Chopper. Most of those 300 or so individuals and entities have a very minimal ownership interest of less than 1%. And there are details in the application packet. I would stress that the, the two chains, the two supermarket chains, will continue to be managed separately and under their respective brand names. And really, you should see no operational changes at the store level. At least, none are planned. So, so these, both the officer and director changes and the changes to ownership are pretty much housekeeping. And you shouldn't notice any, any difference at the store level. That brings me to the third request, which is approval of a change for, of on-premise manager from Enrique Miller to Chris Lawson, who, as I mentioned, is, is on the call. Mr. Lawson has 25 years' experience with Price Chopper. He's been the manager of four stores. He's worked in several stores where alcohol is sold, as Price Chopper has, I believe, eight licenses. Yes, eight licenses at present in Massachusetts. He is tips-trained and has no prior licensing issues whatsoever, actually, either for Mr. Lawson or for this location. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to address those. And if not, certainly, on behalf of Price Chopper, request approval of these changes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? This failure routine, this happens on a regular basis when this kind of stuff happens in business. Nothing? Okay, so we need a couple of motions, right? Or can we do it all in one?
I think there's one recommended motion.
Yeah.
Well, let's try it this way. Somebody, somebody like to make a motion to move to approve Price Chopper Operating Company of Massachusetts, Inc., DBA Price Chopper 229's application for multiple amendments to its Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store license?
So moved.
Second.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think that covers it in one, in one motion. That sound right? Mr. Richard, Attorney.
Sounds, sounds perfect to me. I, I thank the board.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck. Glad you're staying in town.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Have a good evening.
You too. Bye now.
Okay, we down to item number eight, which is to review and act on the schedule for the second half of 2022. Anybody have any comments, conflicts on the schedule?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Samia.
Just one suggestion, like this past year, the last meeting would fall between Christmas and New Year's and as we did this year, just the suggestion that we move the December 27th meeting to the 20th. If people are traveling, as we did and worked well this past year, just a thought.
I was going to say that if you didn't, so, perfect.
That's it.
On me?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't need a vote on that. We just change it. Okay. Good enough, everybody knows what they're going to be doing for the next six months. That's pretty good. We need to approve it? We need to vote on it?
Yeah.
Wow, I don't remember doing that. Okay. So, okay. So we have a mo, a motion to approve the meeting schedule from July through December 2022, with the change from December 27th to December 20th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay. Item nine is to review and act on proposed revisions to Selectman Policy Number 28 or to Selectman Appointments to Municipal Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Ad-Hoc Committees. Mr. Samia, you were going to do something with that. And you are recommending that we hold until?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, if I may. So just by way of background, this came up in the early, I think, early spring, late winter. We talked about the policy and what it actually meant, especially with reappointments. And we looked at it again a few weeks ago. And there was a lot of discussion among the board about whether to keep policy the same, whether we are going through a rigorous reappointment process. Where we came out roughly was formalizing the requirement that those up for reappointment actually respond in writing that they're going to be interested in reapplying. So the, looking at the policy again, the, and after talking with the Town Manager as well, one additional suggestion that asks for some additional time is to, in addition to adding a formal requirement that someone seeking reappointment responds in writing that they're interested, also add another section about posting vacant, not vacancies, posting expiration of terms, not necessarily opening them up, but just letting the public know what's coming up. And hopefully, at that time, getting interest, maybe not in those positions themselves, but just to generally get a feel from individuals, a potential talent pool. So Weston has a policy like this, not exactly on point, that would just add a posting of terms that are expiring. And that's just one other thing to look at. And I'd come back with some potential wording on that.
But would that wording have something in it to the effect of that the terms are expiring and there may or may not be openings?
Yes, yep.
It's not just that they're expiring?
Correct. But it's not, yes, it's setting the right expectation that it's, should there be an opening? You already have a built-in potential set of applicants. But also for future openings, would have potential expressions of interest as well to have a talented pool. We've talked a lot about expanding availability and getting information out to the public. So if they're aware of when expiry, terms are expiring, it also serves that purpose as well. So I'll come back with some words. Weston's not exactly on point, but yeah, to what you're saying as well, we'll clearly talk about what it is within the existing Policy 28, so they'll be surgical.
Okay. Mr. Mizikar, is that essentially what you do?
It is.
Yes.
And you put that there may or may not be openings?
I believe we use similar language to that. Yeah, something similar to that.
So we'll sync up with this.
Yep.
With the Town Manager.
Okay. So you'll get that in a form that we can discuss and decide what we want to do next meeting? Okay? Is that okay?
Go.
Hold this next meeting? Okay. All right, then, we'll carry that over to the 28th. Item 10 is to review and act on the adoption of Board of Selectman Policy. Item 10 is to review an act on the adoption of Board of Selectmen Policy Number 31 Public Comment at the Board of Selectmen's Meetings. Ms. Catherine, do you want to?
Sure. So as we discussed at our last meeting, Selectman DePaolo and I got together and we worked through the policy. We both sort of had our own marked-up drafts, and we took into consideration feedback that we had heard from other members of the board that night. And we created this policy that you have in your drive. We really worked to shorten it. One of the things you'll notice that we removed was discussion around public hearings, because we felt like public hearings were their own separate entity and had their own set of rules, and really didn't apply to this public comment policy, except for a mention of if there's a public hearing scheduled for a meeting, that public comment will not be heard around the topic being discussed at the hearing. So basically, the hearing is for the hearing, it has its own procedure around opening it and having comments being heard, and they shouldn't be preceded, you know, no one should come in early to speak to that. So again, I think, just from conversations one-on-one, just trying to check in with board members to make sure that there's agreement around this policy, because I really would like to see us be able to, you know, approve it and start test-driving it and see how it works. Any changes or concerns or tweaks that people would like to make to what is here?
Any comments? Mr. Samia?
Yeah, thanks for your efforts on this. The two suggestions under, if a person, just the things that an individual's not supposed to bring forward.
What?
What number are you on?
It's a bullet.
It's a bullet.
So it's under two.
Got it.
Fourth bullet. The only suggestion is to dialogue regarding the pending litigation town personnel committee appointments, just a thought, that I know it's, because that's technically within our scope of business, but I don't know if that's something we want people to be presenting to us, that's one thought. And then the second piece, just relates to timing. We talk about that it's Monday the day before, but on Section Roman numeral three, Section eight, we talk about giving an individual up to 48 hours in advance regarding a potential extension of time for an accommodation. But if it's Monday, then the 48 hours, they're not gonna have 48 hours. So one of two suggestions, either it's 24 hours in advance, or we make the deadline Friday. Just so you sync it up, that's all I'm saying. So that way, you have the 48 hours, or you have 24 hours on Monday, or Friday and 48 hours. That's it, just two technical things.
Any thoughts?
If I may, I was thinking that, would we want to consider adding, adding to the agenda the people that are scheduled to speak? And when the agenda has to be posted, is it the Friday before our meeting?
Unless there's a holiday on Monday.
Right. So maybe having it sync up so that when we post the agenda, we have full disclosure on what's on the agenda?
The other, the other towns typically post that? It's just the open comment period, right? Do they, I didn't see any, nobody else does that, I don't think. It doesn't mean we can't, but we don't. I mean, they don't. John, you did a lot.
I didn't see the agendas. I think the added advantage of the Friday, though, beforehand is that if someone, just it gives you time to process.
No.
You have ten people, I have not seen that. I didn't go to that level of detail, I went to the policies.
Okay. Taylor, did you see? What would be, why would we do that?
I didn't look at agendas specifically, I only looked at policies. So I can't speak to whether or not people were listed on the agenda as wanting to speak.
So what?
Well, I, maybe phrased a different way, maybe having the deadline consistent with when we're posting or have to post the agenda is a logical way of backing into Mr. Samia's comments about what the appropriate timing should be for notice that someone is going to...
Is it like 1:00 on Friday, something like that?
So for correspondence, we cut off at noon on Fridays, and then we post before 4:00 p.m., or around 4:00.
Well, what if it's something like that for a meeting, like, not a hearing, but for a meeting? When do you cut off?
It's the same.
It's the same?
Yep. So we post by four on Fridays, at the latest.
We post by four?
Yep.
So when does, when do we say that, if somebody comes in and say, I need to talk, I need to get in before the board on Tuesday, the following Tuesday, what's the cutoff? What time of the day is the cutoff?
Well, if it's an agenda item, it's, yeah, yeah.
A regular agenda item? I mean, not a reg, I know an app, a hearing is, a meeting is a week before?
Well, we, yeah, because we try to get the board, you know, pack it assembled, and depending on the level of information, you know, we worked with John when he was the chair to develop a schedule, so depending on the level of detail in which the board needs to review an item for your consideration, you know, we try to get, you know, new items to you,
Right, okay.
like a development agreement, two weeks in advance, if it's something in between, more routine business, a week in advance.
So this would be treated more like correspondence, then?
Yeah, yeah.
So, just thinking through, wanting to make this easy for people, and I'm concerned about if there's a holiday, now there's this other deadline. Does it make sense to just say 24 hours in advance of the meeting?
Or say Thursday?
That would, you're going back, leaving it at Monday, then?
Twenty, so listening to what you're saying about syncing it up, and hearing what you're saying about, like, the posting date, I'm just concerned that the posting date moves.
That's fine. I think, you know, Mr. Samia's recommendation that we just allow enough time where we're not in conflict with our 48 hours in advance for an accommodation, and not having time to...
Accommodate.
Accommodate, exactly.
So would 24 hours in advance of the meeting then solve for that problem and make it?
The accommodation part has to change.
If we just change the accommodation part?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Either's fine.
Yep, all right.
Okay.
Excellent.
I think I misunderstood what you were saying, I thought you wanted...
I did, Mr. DePaolo, say, should we consider if we wanted to have it be part of the agenda so people can look at the agenda, and we're asking people to let us know in advance, and you have to approve it, then as part of the agenda, it would list who is scheduled to speak that day? But I don't feel strongly enough about it that I would.
I didn't think it was really so much to approve it unless it, so we, just so we knew who was, was coming in and what the topic was, because as long as it's something that, it was really an awareness thing. If it's something that's within the purview of the board, it's gonna be allowed, right? So I, I, I thought it was just so we knew how many people were coming and what, what the topic was. It wasn't to say, no, you can't do it.
I just want to make sure it's easy for people, that's my main concern.
Okay, so...
So I think changing it to 24 hours on both counts
All right, so...
makes sense.
It, it's this, the, there's no other changes?
I do have one comment, I'm not sure if I'm recommending a change, but under Section 3, Number 2, public comments must be related to current or potential actions of the Board of Selectmen. And I think that the spirit of this is to ensure that we just are clear that people should not present prior, or comments on prior decisions. But someone might read this and see potential actions and think that they might be prohibited from really discussing anything. So I think in the context of this policy, there's a statement that really it's anything that's under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. I might just change that first sentence to say, related to current or potential actions or items under the purview of the Board of Selectmen. Just to be clear that it really is more open-ended than people might read from this.
So you're thinking it would mirror part of what's in the purpose?
Correct.
So if we were to take on matters within the scope of the board's authority and also insert that, so it reads, public comments must be related to current or potential actions or matters within the scope of the board's authority, and then continue on with that sentence, would that work for you?
I think so. Again, I don't know that it's, it's, it's critical, because to your point, it's stated in the purpose, but...
I don't, I think it's actually important to put it there. And I know that Selectman DePaolo and I talked about it, and we moved it because we were trying to shorten things and not be redundant. But I do think that for those five words, it's not really gonna make or break the length of the document, and I think it's an important change to make.
Sure. Okay, so you got the wording?
I have it. Taylor, do you have it?
Okay, so does that change?
The only other one we haven't talked about is whether we want to include committee appointments.
Committee appointments, you're, you're not talking about committee, you're talking about, not committee appointments, but people being appointed? It's the people...
Correct. So if we have, well, we're not talking about Policy 28, but if it happens to be, we have people that we're talking about that night for vacancies?
Yeah.
Wouldn't, I, I don't think that, while that's within our authority to appoint people, that I don't think is what we're engaging in. It's, what we see here is we're not looking for comments to be political, that to me falls within that, that when there are appointments for vacancies or reappointments, that's not the type of comments that we're looking for. That's what I was...
Right, you're not coming to say that I support so-and-so for appointment to the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
Right, I think that actually is a smart decision. We want to be careful that comments aren't personal, in general.
So would it be, it wouldn't be committee appointments? It would be, it would be persons recommend...
Committee appointment.
I think it's committee.
Comments on what? Just leave it at committee appointments?
I think it's right after town personnel, as Mr. Samia suggested.
Okay.
I think so. I think it makes sense.
Okay. All right, I was thinking, it was more about...
The appointees.
Don't be throwing people's names out there.
The appointees versus the appointments.
Committee appointees.
Yeah.
Potential committee appointees, whatever. All right.
Let's just try it that way, I think we're pretty clear, and, and we would stop someone and redirect their comments in that case.
Okay.
May I just ask a question regarding the 24-hour notice? How would that be affected by a Monday holiday? Where, you know, 24 hours prior to our meeting would, would be a holiday?
Well, but we, it's...
Just receive it, if I may.
Sure.
I mean, it'd be time stamped in the email, unless they're trying to call. I mean, calling certainly would be a challenge. We, you know, they could leave a voicemail, those are time stamped, our emails are time stamped, so if we want to abide by the 24 hours, we can just use that.
Sure.
Perfect. And that, would that give us sufficient time to, to respond and...
Acknowledge.
Acknowledge?
Yeah.
Okay.
Think so.
We would, we would be able to, from a staff standpoint, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So are we able to vote on this policy with the proposed changes?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Is everyone comfortable with that, rather than waiting another two weeks? And then would it go into effect for our meeting next, in two weeks? That would be my hope, that we would have public comment on the next meeting.
Well, if we vote it tonight, it's effective tomorrow.
Perfect, okay. Just want to be clear with people.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion with the amendments?
Sure. So I move that we adopt Board of Selectmen Policy Number 31, policy comment at Board of Selectmen meetings with the amendments as discussed and recorded by Taylor.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, if any, none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, item 11 is to review an act on the one-day common victors license request of Maria Smith spear to Shrewsbury for Saturday, September 24th, 2022, and Sunday, September 25th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? If any, none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Item 12 is to review an act on the 2020, 2022 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Edgemia Crossing. I think we're all, we're a little confused about this. The way I understand it, after Ms. Lawson explained it to me, and I read through the papers again, HUD every year sets the allowable limits. And so every year, the landlords are allowed to apply to change them. And so the people at Edgemia Crossing have made that application. It not, it's not only for being able to increase the fees, the rental fees, the utility fees, it also raises the limits of eligibility. So on the one hand, they take, on the other hand, they take it away. I mean, they give it, then they take it away. But it is in within the confines of the, of HUD regulations. Planning departments reviewed it, and they recommend it. Just as, as a way of information, what it means for a one-bedroom apartment annually is a $1,600 and change increase, and a two-bedroom is just under $1,800 annual increase. So having said that, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the application?
I actually had a question about it first.
Sure.
So I understand the documents, but I guess what I don't understand is why would this be the only complex, apartment complex in town requesting such a change?
So it's done on a complex-by-complex basis, and you actually have approved changes over time for Quinn 35 at Lakeway?
Right.
So it's at their discretion at the...
So sometimes they just don't decide to change the rent?
Yeah, I mean...
Yeah, it might be on their timing.
Yeah, it'd be a number of factors, including their current lease agreements and things like that.
I asked Kristen the same question.
Yeah, I just wasn't, it's just we have so many apartment complexes in town, it just seems strange to me that there would just be the one.
These are only the officially adopted affordable units. So the ones that are subject to the lottery and the application process that the board has entered into a LIP agreement on and has a controlling factor in.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, then I will make a motion to approve the 2022 Affordable Housing Rent Increase Request for Edgemia Crossing.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If any, none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to review the Community Preservation Committee Plan and to discuss future priorities related to the Community Preservation Act and strategic plan. This is a multi-part discussion, and I think I caused confusion on it. I think members are aware that I've been saying that we, the board, needs to have a discussion about, not about the Community Preservation Act, because that's already in, but how the town approaches, how we plan, what we're gonna do, the town plans, how it approaches, the projects that would be the priorities for the town in applying for funding for the programs, basically. So that there's some order to it, and there's a plan to it. Certainly, the CPC can take any application it wants, as long as it conforms to the law regarding the Community Preservation Act. So I, to start off, so anyways, this thing just confused, I think it even more confused what I was trying to say. I did not know this was coming out when it came out. I had wanted to discuss this six months ago, and for a whole bunch of reasons, we just never did have the discussion about the board, what the board would like to do about the, about this. This did come out, this is the report, this is the plan. It, it's a good plan, it addresses each one of the buckets, if you will. It talks about the goals that it's identified based on... It talks about the goals that it's identified based on the public input it got and on the various reports and studies that we have. And this is aspirational. This isn't, I guess I'm saying it the right way. It's not operational. It doesn't say how we're going to do it. It said, this is what we want to do. So it's good. I think they did a great job on it, and I give them a lot of credit for getting this done so quick. They don't think they got it done very fast. I think they got it really fast. Affordable Housing Trust is like eight months behind them, and we're just looking at putting out an RFP for a consultant to help us get started, and they've already got their thing done. So I think, personally, I think this is a good document. I think it tells people what it is we're trying to do. What I wanted to talk about and ask the board to consider is, does the board, I think the board needs to discuss its position on, just, and before we get into it, I want to read some, because I'm not going to get this right if I don't read off my notes. Do we want to take a position on open space? What do we want to do about it? Do we only want to buy open space to protect the aquifer? Do we, the water supply, do we want to buy open space to preserve open space, or whatever? So I hope that this kind of clears up what I'm talking about before we start talking, and so just indulge me for a couple of minutes. So I wasn't planning on doing that little intro on this, but, and we'll come back to talk about this if you want. But so, as you know, the CPC completed its community preservation plan. It's done an excellent job identifying the high-level goals and the process for identifying needs and applying for and awarding funds. Based upon input from town boards in the community, as well as various town plans and studies, CPC has laid out a series of goals for each category, open space, recreation, historic preservation, and community housing. In the plan, specifically on page one, CPC states that it's a living document. The committee will annually revise the plan to incorporate the latest community preservation needs as identified through public outreach and, and this is important to what I'm talking about, feedback from associated boards and committees. In addition, on page eight, the CPC states, "In order to assess and update Shrewsbury's community needs, goals, and resources regarding community housing, preservation, open space, and recreation, the CPC will solicit feedback from town commission, boards, committees, and community organizations." And it's also required to at least, to hold at least one public hearing annually to gain input from the general public. So the board is in a unique position of all the boards and commissions in town that we have a broad overview of all the areas of town government, facilities, operations, because of what we deal with. We're the only board that really is involved in everything except for education. We deal with the funding. So in the spirit of what they're saying above, to get information from the committees, et cetera, the boards, the board has an opportunity, as a board, if it chooses, to present what it thinks are the most important priorities to the CPC for consideration. Not specific projects, but these are where we think we should be concentrating. These are the areas we think we should concentrate. So again, the goals of the Community Preservation Act are aspirational. They're saying this is what we want to do. We want to protect, we want to protect the water supply. We want to protect open space. We want to protect wetlands, whatever. But it doesn't say how to do it. It says what we want to do. So what I'm suggesting is that our board developed our suggestions for an action plan, for lack of a better term, to achieve those goals. And it's at the concept level. It's not do this project. So in other words, the concept is, I think what we've all heard, people want to see more trails. So what are the action plans is extend trails, improve trails, whatever. That's just one of the things. It's not the project level. It's not to say fund the development of a loop trail at Lake Street for $500,000. It's not that specific. It's not meant to try to compel the CPC to do anything. It's just to give our priorities when they're considering, to be considered, when they're considering applications. It's like, how does this fit into the bigger picture? And again, they can, they have the authority to bring anything to town meeting that they feel fits the criteria of the Community Preservation Act. So it's the following, it's just following the process that's outlined in the plan. That's all this is. We're just another group giving our opinion. So that's the first step, is us deciding if we want to give suggestions on what we think the priorities are. The next step would be if we work on that, once we get our plan complete, whatever that is, whatever we decide, then the board would convene a workshop with the other boards and committees with close ties to the CPA, like CPC, Parks and Rec, Affordable Housing Trust, Conservation Commission, Trails Committee, and Planning Department. And it's a big group. It probably has to be in a library. But it's to say, okay, as a point of beginning discussion, these are things that we've identified. Let's talk about what everybody in the room thinks collectively should be the priorities for the town going forward with this stuff.
Mr. DePaolo, may I? May I ask a question or make a suggestion? Or do you want to keep going?
Go ahead.
I would really love to invite the CPC here to a meeting to summarize what their plan is. You know, this just came out a week ago. And I think it would be helpful for us to hear them not only summarize for us what it includes, but also hear from them what they would like a partnership and collaboration to look like. So I respect all of your comments. I just feel a little like we're getting ahead of ourselves. Like, I'd like to just start with, let's hear from them. I do honestly have a little fear of, I don't want to overstep. So I'd like to maybe just take it in a step, and it's not, it's standard policy for us to, or practice for us, to have people come in and sort of deliver their report or their results. And I'd love to hear their thoughts directly.
Okay, we can do that, but let me finish my thought. And the intention is not to cut the CPC out of this. And I have had discussion with the chair, so he understood what I was talking about. And yeah, we can have them in, and we can discuss it. But this group gets together and develops a draft concept action plan. So taking what maybe we start with, it ends up wherever it ends up in that room. And then we would take it at some point to a public forum, similar to what they had for the town center, and get public input based on what that group had identified as priority items. Let people comment on it. Let them vote on those things. Let them add what they feel is important. And then come back, look at that, incorporate it all into one plan. And then, after one of those two steps, then the appropriate committees, whoever they are, would develop their own specific plan, like open space, create an undeveloped land, private land, a private undeveloped land inventory if we're interested in buying land. Historic properties inventory, we got to get it completed. It's related to, again, to the CPC. Affordable Housing Trust has got to do a plan anyways to decide what we want to do. And then Parks and Rec would obviously want to develop a plan to develop, improve, and expand parks, playgrounds, hiking trails, whatever they decide they want. And it becomes a draft action plan that all of those boards, committees have worked on, agree on, and then we bring it into the strategic planning process. And we vet it through that, and then that's the plan for, it's for guidance. It's not for this is what you're going to do. It's the kind of stuff we want to do. So people have a focus, and that's all this is about. It's just to be organized. And so that's what this is about. That we haven't talked a lot, not just this particular board, but we haven't talked a lot over a long time about what we would like to do in any of these areas, because we never had the money to do it. And now we're on the cusp of having money to do it, so now's the time to talk about it. It's planning, and that's all this is about. It isn't to tell the CPC what to do. It's just getting input from the stakeholders of what they see as priorities. So having said that, and we can invite CPC in, I personally don't have a problem with that. Anybody have any comments, suggestions?
Mr. Chairman, so thank you for that. I guess my first thought, though, is that in terms of order, we continue on our strategic planning process, and part of that's community engagement. So we develop not only the goals for 2030, but the more immediate visioning. I think that's going to inform what these priorities are, at least from the community perspective. I think that you're going to have concurrent operations, because if you look at what the CPA provides for funds, and then how you allocate it among the three statutory requirements of 10%, they're going to undertake some good projects. But if we're talking about affordable housing, that would take virtually all those proceeds. They couldn't do that by themselves, and that's where the Affordable Housing Trust comes in. And that's the facilitation of potentially getting the boards all working together. What I view, though, as the first step is that we need to go through the next six months or whatever that period is of the remaining part of the strategic planning process that will help inform what the priorities are. And then the board's goals related to these areas, depending upon what we hear from the public. Well, I think that will inform where we go. If people say we want more trails, we want more affordable housing, we'd like our parks upgraded, then that's part of the sort of marching orders that we have. I think that will inform how we go forward. I do agree with you that it's important that we all talk regularly, the various boards, to make sure that you're going to maximize the resources that we have, can work together if possible on affordable housing to take the inclusionary bylaw, the dollars ultimately that could go there, if there's a way to sort of piggyback on funding together with general appropriated dollars. So I think my first step is ultimately, what's the, where are we going as a town? What's our plan? What's the immediate next few years? But getting that engagement piece that we're looking to still get from the community or additional engagement to help inform where we'd go as a community.
Right.
So it's more, rather than this informing the strategic plan, I think the strategic planning process will inform the next steps for us.
I guess I didn't say it right. I meant bring this draft thing into the strategic planning process and use it in the planning process, not, this wouldn't be the plan. But I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, bring it in as a starting point for it. Because some of this stuff is already being done. We're already working on the housing plan. We're already working on the inventory of undeveloped land, and we're already working on the historic inventory. So it's, I'm not saying, the action plan, yes, it needs to be, I think it needs to be, finally, the final plan needs to be run through the strategic plan.
I think the other piece, though, that has to accommodate all of this relates to the funding of it. Because as you're talking about, we have funding and turning aspirational into action, I think goes to me that we play out, for us, the next six months, playing out the six months, play out the processes to what are the priorities of our community, and how does that inform where we're looking to go for the next eight years? So I guess I just think of it process-wise that we're not going to start this group, and then that feeds into the plan, where the plan will help feed where we're going, what the priorities are to direct this. And then, that's how I see it. Because I mean, the CPA is going to have 1%. I mean, it's limited. It's more than we originally thought, but it's still a million dollars. I mean, it's, for a lot of these things, if we're talking about housing, it's going to be a lot more than a million dollars. If we're talking about park developments, open space and all of this, it's a lot more than that. So there's no doubt that CPC has clear statutory guidelines that needs to go with. But a lot of these things would require collaboration among all the boards in order to be effective and get it done. So I guess it's, it's just in terms of process, for me, we're about two steps before that in terms of what informs it.
And maybe, you're right, maybe that, that's, we're talking about getting to the same point, just a different way. And maybe you're right, that that is the way to go. But I think we're both saying the same thing. We should have some kind of a plan, some kind of an outline of where we'd like to see it go. So yeah, we can prioritize, we, the town, I mean, CPC is not on its own. CPC is going to bring stuff in, but they want to see how things fit into the bigger picture, too. So, and what I neglected to say was, this isn't only for CPC that I'm talking about. There is other grant money out there. We applied for a grant for Jordan Pond to develop accessible walking trails in that whole area. We haven't heard yet. But if we have a plan in those areas, as the opportunity goes up, we already know what, we have an idea that we want to try to get funded instead of going looking for something. So it's not just the CPC. So anyways, anybody else?
I always see value in having a discussion around our goals, our priorities, especially of these four areas. And I would like to understand from the strategic plan, what does the community see? I think that we need to work in step with the community. Again, I think I understand what you're getting at. I think it's a worthy topic for a workshop to go through this exercise and understand what are we going to be prioritizing as far as acquiring open space? Are we trying to have some connectivity between open space using trails? Is that what, I hear that from people. They want to be able to walk, you know, and access more than just a small parcel of open space. And how would we go about that? So that if, let's say, a piece of land does come up for sale, we're ready, and we know, and we've identified that this is something that we want to spend our dollars on. I guess where I'm not clear is how do we do this and do this in tandem with the strategic planning process and not somehow, I don't know, not fit in with it? It's the timing of it that I guess I'm not really clear on, because the strategic plan is well underway, and I'm not sure that our timing links up to that. Or did we already, in our, you know, in our off-site workshop, articulate some of our goals in these areas? Because I think that we did. And will that come through in the strategic plan? And, you know, we have a workshop on it tomorrow night when we're going to revisit all of what we talked about in sort of summary form. all of what we talked about in sort of summary form. I think that some of these four areas, if not all of them, were discussed and touched on in our conversations around our priorities for the town going forward. So yeah, I guess I'm just trying to understand how and where it fits.
Yeah, I mean, the way I'm saying, I think we could move forward, might not be, I'm certain it's not the only way we could move forward. I think for our board, for what we're doing in the strategic plan right now, I think you're probably right. I'm not thinking this is our board telling the rest of the town what they should do. I think our board's got to get on the same page. So we've got some consensus of what we think we should do. And when we have that, then we can talk to other people to start the discussion and hear what they have to say, and whether they think that stuff that we have and that we're suggesting is the right thing to do, or the appropriate thing to do, or they have other ideas. And then everybody working together collectively, representing the community, because I agree, we need community input. We need a basis to start. I don't think you can just sit in a room and say, tell us what you want to do. You say, we are, we've identified areas, let's start here. Whether it ends up with that or not is not the point. It gives people a place to start and focus. Where it ends up, it ends up. What people decide they want in the end, that's what they want. So yeah, we could do it that way. I really want to get the discussion going more than anything else. I think it's, I don't think it's helpful to just have everything open and not have a vision for where we're trying to go. That's the whole point of strategic plan. This is a subset of it. So that, I guess that's my point. We can think about how we want to approach it. You know, we come forward, the idea's out there, everybody can think about it, see how we want to do it, we can talk to CPC and get their ideas on it, it's fine. I just don't think we should do nothing. And somebody's got to get the conversation going. And I don't, I think our board's just as appropriate to conversation going as anybody else. My opinion. Anybody else have anything? No?
So what's the next step, a workshop?
Well, I didn't want to dominate the conversation. I wanted to make sure that other people had an opportunity. I think that we're a little workshop-heavy right now. I really...
Let's see what comes out of the workshop.
Right. I almost think we might have a workshop tomorrow night that would bring us to this point. But I mean, for the broader public who may not know, like, we have a workshop in the morning tomorrow, and we have a workshop in the afternoon. And my husband looked at me and he's like, what do people with jobs do? And I was like, aw. You know, like, it's a lot right now because we're working through the DEI work. And that is, it's been frequent, and it's mentally taxing. I mean, we're thinking about issues that are very much outside of what we normally think about. And it requires a lot of introspection and care. And I think that we need to be mindful of the amount of time that we're putting in and sort of think of where this could fit so that we're not overstretching. I know we have another off-site workshop planned for July already. I just want to be mindful that we don't burn ourselves out trying to get everything done because it's all a priority and it's all important. But again, it's a marathon and not a sprint.
Right, doesn't have...
So yes, a workshop, but not this month.
No, I wasn't having to workshop right now. I think we'll see what comes out of that workshop, and if in fact some of these concepts are in what we're going to talk about.
Yeah.
I again go to, I would like to meet with the CPC before we have a workshop because I really do think a lot of their plan is going to inform my personal thoughts and point of view around how we should be proceeding. So I want to make sure we're not, you know, redundant in some respects. I think that we can build off of a lot of what they've done. I would just, and I would like, you know, a lot, you pointed out, Mo, you know, they indicated that they will solicit. So let's hear how they want to solicit. Let's hear how they want to hear about our involvement and working with them, and go from there. So I personally would prefer that we take it in steps as everyone has outlined, and that we invite them here and hear firsthand their thoughts on that.
I think we already agreed to that.
Yeah, I agree with that, Trish.
I think we, I think we agreed that we'll have them in.
I think you did. I just didn't know if that was something that we collectively, when we talked about next steps.
Anybody else? Okay. Did we beat that dead for a moment? Okay. Okay, next order of business is to review and discuss the American Rescue Plan Act Phase Two funding process. Mr. Musica?
All right, I'm going to present some slides. All right, so I just want to take a couple of minutes and recap where we are with regards to the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, which is the 2021 federal legislation that provided stimulus and recovery funds to states and municipalities across the United States for recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. The town of Shrewsbury is expected to receive in total $11.5 million in funding for our use in those purposes. This is something that we've been discussing and bringing forward from late 2020 into early 2021, and discussed during the conversation with regards to the budget challenges in 2021 and at other times. So with regards to how municipalities are receiving those funds, it's being dispersed to us in two separate tranches. The first, we received the last summer, received half of the funding, $5.7 million in funding. We anticipate receiving the second $5.7 million in funding this summer. So we only have half of the funds on hand. And we have worked throughout the fall of 2021 and into the early winter of 2022 of how we're going to spend some of those funds. And that was all presented and approved by the Board of Selectmen at various times since we've had those funds on hand. So with regards to the federal rulemaking process, as we talked about whenever these funds were initially being presented, we needed to have patience. The federal rulemaking process is very complicated and very prolonged. And we received preliminary information as early as May of 2021 on what we may be able to spend the funds on, how much we're going to receive. The feds went through their entire rulemaking process and published their final rule only in January of this year. And there was a substantial change, something that those who have been part of federal, receiving federal rules in the past were anticipating but weren't certain, which was, you know, a major rule change from the preliminary interim rule, which was very complicated, 100-page document that laid out so many different layers of how funds can be received. And then the feds heard feedback from the National League of Cities and other local government advocates, and lessened their rules up quite a bit. And those became effective only about 60, 75 days ago, on April 1st, 2022. The largest change that was made at that time was that every municipality or every entity that's receiving federal funds was allowed to treat the first $10 million or the total amount, which was, which, you know, was ever greater, up to $10 million, as revenue loss. And revenue loss is that most desired category where municipalities are able to spend funds pretty much any area that we're, we have statutory authority to undertake municipal operations, programs, and projects. So Shrewsbury receiving $11.5 million in total means that the first $10 million is able to be counted towards revenue loss in that broadest category, giving us the most discretion and least amount of reporting that we have to do back to the federal government. Still plenty of reporting, but it's not associated with the, you know, four primary categories that were originally presented. We don't have to demonstrate very detailed levels of economic loss and direct pandemic impacts whenever we're considering these programs. Those things all still, of course, remain in our heads. We want to do the best that we can with these dollars. But we have much more freedom than we would have had if the original rule that was presented in 2021 remained in place. So how have we committed funds to date? So the Board of Selectmen has voted to approve expenditure of $3,876,422 as of this evening. The initial step that you took was in response to your commitment through the override process in the spring of 2021, where you used ARPA funds to reduce the tax levy. So rather than go to the taxpayers in the fall of 2021 at town meeting to make adjustments to the budget, you dedicated $465,577 in lieu of the tax levy to make operational expenditures. Thereafter, you received information that we orchestrated through staff, where departments were allowed to make project proposal requests at the time. Again, these were under the original preliminary rule, which was a much higher bar to meet. But you ultimately voted to dedicate funding in public, $1,362,200 in public health-related expenditures, projects, programs, $497,045 in negative impacts. And that included, you know, economic stimulus programs, small business grant programs, things like that. And then the largest category was a $1.6 million investment in water and sewer infrastructure to replace a water main in the northeast quadrant of the community that's been on our list and will benefit us both because it's an aged water main and needed to be replaced, but also economic development in that area. So where do we stand right now? We have about $1.9 million that's unencumbered from tranche one. And those funds are in our bank and remain available for your consideration. We don't know exactly when we're going to receive the second round of funding. If it's consistent with the distribution last summer, we'll likely have everything in our bank by mid-August. So I don't want to get too far ahead of actually receiving the funding. We've heard a lot of conversations in Washington about how disappointed some Congress individuals are, citing these percentages of Rescue Plan Act funds that haven't even been expended, and they haven't even given us all the money yet. So we just want to be cautious on how we proceed. As we consider how we're going to use all or some of this $1.8 million that we have in hand, and then also what we may receive, or what we will receive in tranche two, hopefully, I just want to have the board keep in mind, this is our only pandemic reserve that we're ever going to get unless things take just the most unbelievable turn for the worse that we would never anticipate right now. Like, we're not going to get any more funding for COVID-19. So we do need to maintain a reasonable amount of money to continue to provide testing programs, be able to respond to future waves of the virus because there's no new, there's not going to be an ARPA stimulus Phase Two or anything like that as far as receiving additional funding from the federal government. At this point in time, my clearest recommendation would be that you'd want to keep around $800,000 that's unencumbered in the bank at any time until we get into a prolonged cycle and receive advice from the public health leadership and experts that we're really moving even closer to that endemic stage of this pandemic and, you know, aren't going to be looked upon as an individual municipality to have to weather any more significant waves like Omicron or something like that that we went through last winter. We still do have real costs when those waves come. Most of those are more supporting town operations and employee well-being, employee testing, including the operation of the school department in supporting some programs that the school has offered, especially if they don't receive any additional funding, like their testing program and other initiatives that have kept kids in schools and numbers as low as we possibly can. So with regards to ARPA Phase Two, the Board of Selectmen held a workshop a couple of weeks ago at the end of May. Really had a good conversation that we're trying to both place more formally on this agenda tonight and have additional conversation. I'm looking for feedback on how the board would like to move forward, and I'd like to share with you a little bit of information with regards to what the leadership team and employees across the town think that additional ARPA funds could be used for. So again, my recommendation at this point is to maintain a pandemic reserve of $800,000 of that $1.8 million that we have. We have, if we're thinking about the total amount of funding that we have to come in, including tranche one and tranche two, we've talked about a capital investment. The Board of Selectmen, in accord, or as part of Phase One, did set aside funding to investigate additional design options for the renovation and potential expansion of this town hall in order to meet the operational needs of the community. So that has been on the table. No specific dollar value has been assigned to that formally by the board, but that's something that I think we should consider in our conversation this evening. Do we want a capital investment set aside? And a capital investment set aside, to be really clear, is a way to mitigate the cost impact of any capital improvements on the tax levy and therefore benefit the taxpayer. So this isn't about using a set of funds that doesn't require further approval by town meeting or something like that. If we're going to borrow, we would need to go to town meeting. But this is about keeping the tax rate as low as we possibly can and using the resources that are available to us that we may never have in the future to be able to benefit the entire community. As we talked about in the workshop, the board was building consensus around the release at this time, in the midsummer or early summer, a conversation about another $750,000 investment in what we're calling ARPA Phase Two. That's our local funding nomenclature. And that conversation really centered on projects and programs that directly benefit residents. So after that conversation, we went back to staff and said, you know, the Board of Selectmen has had this conversation. Please, let's get some ideas available so the board can react to, help them make their decision. And of course, we tried to limit departments in their thinking, but the needs across the town and the voraciousness of their interest in funding a whole slew of beneficial programs to the, benefited the operation of the town, led to 23 requests for funding by departments that totaled about $2.4 million. So we have a lot of information to work from, that's the good news. If I, and I did draw the line of what I thought were projects and programs that directly benefited residents as part of your discussion that we participated in, I think there's about $220,000 that fully meet that criteria. So this is really taking and implementing a new project or program that residents can participate in or benefit from. What are those things? Those things are food insecurity, there are expansion of library services, there are expansion of recreation program opportunities and physical infrastructure. So something that residents can really touch and feel. What it's not, it's not a program or an operating measure that will indirectly benefit residents by improving town operations. It's something that they're going to be able to see, touch, and feel, and really know that ARPA funds were spent on these things. So this evening, what I'm hoping to do is get a little bit of additional feedback on how much funding the board wants to allocate at this time. We can go into some more detail on the six, those six requests. Are there other categories and areas that you're seeking funding for that town staff didn't identify? And then what is that process that you want to use moving forward to kind of seal the deal on Phase Two? As we, you know, receive that second phase of, the second tranche of funding later this summer? So do you want to have some workshops? What's the input and approval process that you would like to see? And how do we gather feedback so we can all make this decision? So again, we're looking to release funds of, I hope, no more than $800,000 at least that we have on hand. But, you know, is there that consideration for capital? Do we want to go back to the $750,000 number? Do we want to go back to the $750,000 number? And how do we really want to define programs that directly benefit residents? So those are my comments.
Before we get into that, could you just real quickly go over the six things that you think we should consider? So at least we're talking about.
Sure. Just let me pull my screen down real quick. So it's going to be hard to see on the screen, but I just wanted to get that up there. So we all work on the same sheet. So the main projects area is the two first area, the two initial projects to present are in the areas of parks and recreation. They total about $25 million, $26 million in total investments. Be the installation of a batting cage near Field Three at Dean Park and the purchase and installation of accessible picnic tables at Dean Park.
Did you say 25 million?
Yeah, something's not right there.
Oh, did I say 25 million?
You said $26 million.
We don't have that much money.
I was like, wow.
$26,000. So a proposal to kind of build off of the Communication Strategic Plan that we've been working on, establishing direct-to-resident communication through a quarterly newsletter, a additional creation of something that we've all talked about, which is a Citizens Academy, and then another initiative for a podcast or some type of show where we can just provide the community with more information in a modern format to engage with people in different ways. So again, that's a community newsletter, another form of medium, like a podcast or something related there too. And then the development of a Citizens Academy to help engage with residents, teach them more about local government and find additional opportunities for them to participate in their local government.
How would do that?
That's $50,000. And then the final area is a $75,000 allocation to expand food insecurity services with the building on the $75,000 that we received from a state earmark. This would allow for the prolonging and additional acquisition of both materials, space and equipment to further reduce food insecurity within the community. So those are the primary recommendations, again, that have come in through staff. The board had also talked about that evening about various programs and projects like home heating assistance, especially as inflation has rapidly taken off here and we're all experiencing it. Those would be eligible projects or programs to take on. And then it's really orders of magnitude within these types of projects. We can go back to staff and refocus them as well, but this is what originally come up from that solicitation for their input.
Ideas, comments, questions? Nobody?
Are you specifically asking for comments based on those specific recommendations for the funding?
Either those or other ideas that you have.
Mr. Mizikar, do you mind if I just? Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm staying within the intent of this conversation. So we're talking about the $750,000 that we released for?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, something roughly around that, right? Like, obviously, you know, are we working within that parameter of $750,000? Is that the next investment that we want to make? And then how do we make that investment? Like, is it, do we take programs in broad project areas or specific projects themselves and solicit feedback, you know, just from departments again, from the community? Like, what is our process that we're going to use in allocating the next round of funding? Or given the fact that the second tranche is coming, is the 750 the wrong, you know, not the right number? Then my final layer is that capital investment. You know, are we going to have a set aside? Is that something that we want to, you know, keep, you know, our investment moving forward? Potential investment moving forward in and just work at the $75,000, $750,000 level? Or do we go beyond that?
And can I just check my math? So in rough numbers, we got, we expect to get about 11.5 million. We've committed, you know, roughly 3.9. And if we look at the $750,000 that we had discussed using for downtown department requests and the $800,000 recommended pandemic reserve for the unknown, there's about 6 million remaining. And that's sort of a secondary conversation of do we continue to consider that for a capital project or otherwise? But I think in light of, you know, the recommendations that you had just outlined, I love the idea of investing in more community communication and engagement mechanisms, if you will. I think we've heard pretty loud and clear that people just need more distilled information. So I really love this idea of a newsletter, a podcast, like just a five-minute state of the town. Here's what you need to know. Here's what's going on. Like, here's where you can go if you want all of the details. But I really do think that we need to find ways to effectively and efficiently communicate with residents. Even things like, you know, what you've mentioned about the mattress bulk pickups. Like, you know, inevitably, you'll be driving down the street and see a mattress waiting to be picked up. So just how we can improve the ways that people are informed.
So I know that we've discussed having some sort of a forum for residents to have direct input into how we proceed with the next amount of money. I think the $750,000 is the right amount, personally. I think it's too much to put out the full second sum of money. Number one, we don't have it. Number two, you never know if they're going to change the rules around how we can use it. But number three, I just think it's too large of a sum. And I could see us having a forum where residents come and we have these six things for them to react to, but knowing that we also have additional dollars and so we can take some feedback from people. We haven't really had that opportunity for people to really give us any direct feedback on how they'd like to see some of this money used. And, you know, there might be something we haven't thought of before. So I'm wondering if we could take these ideas and use them as a basis for having some community engagement.
Mrs. Hamer?
So the, you know, a couple of things. We have a traffic study, multimodal study, I guess. We have a communication plan that we're looking at right now. I don't know if we're in the first part or second part of that phase. We have the strategic plan. And the funds, we don't have the second tranche in and they don't have to be encumbered to 2024. And we're, by most economists' viewpoint now, we're going to expect a recession. So sometime, possibly next year, but who knows? Given all of that, I don't think, I think moving with cautious speed right now, I think 750 makes sense. I think during the workshop, we talked about a lot of positive endeavors for our community. I think we move forward with that, elicit company, community feedback. But I think it's also important that, as you said, Mr. Mizikar, we don't expect another ARPA tranche. We don't know. It's been, when we thought it was done a year ago, it came back in a roaring way that I don't think the feds will come with another pile of money, given the lack of spending that they continue to point to. So I think that we have an initial thought with the amount. Get some more feedback. 750 is a good number, it's meaningful. We have the $220,000 here. It's fine to move forward in some combination of those, but also find out through talking to community members where else is part of that? I think part of that of engagement during the strategic planning process. We can find out what else. Immediate, we know that with fuel prices, gas prices, grocery prices, what else can we do as well? So I'm fine, I think that there is no rush to spend the second tranche. And I think there are just so many unknowns and we've heard about this for years, but this is really unknown territory for all of us, particularly with level inflation the highest in what, 40 years and all of this. So I think that we move forward cautiously, but also in a meaningful way that we've talked about and we talked about during our workshop to help residents and also find other ways we can help residents in the near-term future. As well as, from a capital investment standpoint, there are things based on what we, with the studies and the planning that we have, that if it's an opportunity to do something that we otherwise, wouldn't it still something we'd need to do when it would benefit the taxpayers? I think that can be on the table. It's just there are a lot of levers right now that could be pulled to do that. No rush to spend it, given we have two years still to figure it out.
I, you know, I agree. I think it makes sense for us to, you know, look for projects for that $750,000, especially, you know, some of these projects, like directly helping people that are struggling as a result of the pandemic. You know, with the installation of the food pantry, I'm sorry, the community fridge at the senior center. And just seeing over the last few weeks how, just how much it's been used. There is a need in our community. People need help and, you know, there are some really good pieces on here that, you know, we can have a direct impact on people's lives. So I think it's, I think, you know, it's a good use of the funding.
I agree with what you've said so far, but I do think we need to have a big set aside for fuel assistance. There's no indication that fuel is coming down dramatically in the next year. That we, it's not a big, we're coming into the, we're not, we're coming out of the heating season, but in the fall, we're going to have it. And even before the prices went up, we were hearing that the emergency funding that we had for sewer, which was what, 75 gallons, I think? It wasn't dollars, it was gallons, whatever. It was helpful, but doesn't get you very far. I could see us, I don't know what the number is, but I could see, but just say for the sake of argument that it's only $4 a gallon. We should be putting some serious money aside for that. At least have it available, I think. And there still might be people have issues with their other utility bills. So, you know, I think we shouldn't be kidding ourselves just because we think we're a affluent community that there are people who don't have a need. And I think there's some people who might have been in much better shape before COVID that might not be now. So certainly don't need to spend $6 million on it, but I think there's a need there and I think we need to be aware of it. And it's got to be, I think it's got to be a priority. And I think as far as determining eligibility, if people are eligible for SMOC or some of the other programs for the state, then that's the eligibility on it. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. But the other stuff, I think it sounds good. I think the communication plan is good. We've been talking about that for a while. So I'm fine with that. And I do agree with John, the rest of it, just move cautiously. We'll see where this goes, where the economy goes. Not looking good right now. We might end up finding out that we have other problems that we don't even know we have yet. But yeah, let's start with that. So we got, what, we've got half a dozen, maybe more than half a dozen buckets right now that we're talking about. So public forum, you'd say, bring those together. These are the things right now that we see and have people comment.
That's what I see, right? A very brief presentation on these six things, but then, or seven things, if you want to add in the fuel assistance. Then an opportunity for people to write. Like, I don't think it should be a speaking thing, like it's writing.
So a couple of suggestions maybe along those lines. So at your second meeting in June or first meeting in July, Taylor and I will be rolling out the public engagement portion of the strategic plan, which we think is pretty, is a pretty solid plan. It will have, Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but at least six or seven opportunities, different days and different times for residents to engage with us in the strategic plan. And we're going to locate ourselves where residents are. So everyone's not always going to have to come to us. We're going to be at the food truck nights. We're going to be at the farmer's market. And, you know, we'll have a tent there and we'll be gathering feedback in those places, just like we've talked about all along through the strategic plan process. So we could have a supplemental survey, you know, those evenings, you know, to gather feedback on this as well. And then we have the opportunity to do electronic surveys. You know, so we can put slide decks together. We'll confirm the six or seven areas that the board wants the residents to consider and bring those to you at an upcoming meeting, get your sign off and just kind of work in that public engagement that we already have planned for late July, early August.
And we, just so the public knows, we haven't talked about the mental health issue because we've already, I mean, you could throw a lot more money at it, but we've already really on addressed funding for SYFS. So that's why we're not talking about it. We've already made that commitment and investment.
Yeah, that was the second, outside of that water and sewer project, that was the second single largest investment of $606,000 to support SYFS.
And I think, when you, I think when you, when you have those public engagements, you should include that in there because I know that that's on a lot of people's minds, not just in choose me, but I mean, you hear that discussion constantly, that they should know that we're doing that. Because I think that's important too.
Support the idea of an electronic survey also. I think it's another way of reaching people.
Could you have the public come to the Board of Selectmen meetings like you were talking about? The, what's it called? Like how you said you could have public?
Oh, public comment?
Public comment, yeah.
That's something they would like to talk about, sure. But the difference is with the public comment period, it's more of a listening for us. So people shouldn't expect that they're going to get like feedback.
Let's see how Kevin's program goes. And if we think we need more, we can have a public hearing. Let's try, I think the other way is going to be more effective because it's more casual and people are more likely to talk.
I also like that you're going to the people rather than like people, where people already are instead of someone having to take the extra step of going someplace.
Okay, you good? Anything else?
No, I think it's a great, I think it's a great plan. I like getting people's input. I think if it's not clear, we're committed to continuing to have conversations about it and not, you know, spend it unbeknownst to people. I know I've heard some feedback. And I also know that other towns have done some, I could call them innovative or progressive, but some interesting things with some of their ARPA funds. And I really do feel like we want to be focused on alleviating, you know, a tax or expense burden that would otherwise be put on residents and obviously doing things that will benefit our community and certainly those that are vulnerable. So I know I've heard, you know, feedback from some about, oh, you're putting it aside for a capital project. We're not saying like, oh, we have this money and we're now going to look for ways to spend it. It truly is, we've already initiated conversations about outgrowing space and not being able to continue community services or services for residents. to continue community services or services for residents. So it, it really is about how do we ensure that we mitigate an expense that would otherwise be put on taxpayers? So I, I agree with holding off and, and taking a little bit of time to be thoughtful about how we do invest that second tranche of, of ARPA funds.
Okay, then we'll move on to the next item, 15th, review and act on salary adjustment for the town manager. Can I ask that we hold that till the next meeting? We're going to have a executive session prior to actually having the public sex, the public?
Discussion.
Discussion before that. So we'll have, we'll meet a little early, have the executive session, then come out and vote. So we'll carry that forward. Is there anything else before I go into correspondence? Okay. Item 16 is an email dated May 23rd from John Travis, Scoutmaster Troop Four, regarding a request for proclamation that, that was done, that was last weekend. Is that the one you went to, Michelle?
It is, yes. It was Eddie Naris and Matthew Pelizari. So it was a wonderful ceremony, it was really nice to, to be in attendance.
Okay, thank you. Item 17 is an email dated May 25th, 2022, from Alexia Escalera, Gray Robinson, P.A., regarding common fixtures license, wondering if they were required to have one at 7-Eleven and they're, they're not because they don't have seating. So noted. Item 18 is an email dated May 31st, 2022, from Jeffrey Snyder, Commissioner, Commissioner and Sean Cronin, Senior Deputy Commissioner of Local Services, Mass Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, proposed equalized valuations. Did you see that? Is there anything that was shattering in there? Okay. I had trouble understanding it, but it didn't look like there was anything that was shattering in it. Okay, thank you. Item 19 is an email dated May 26th, 2022, from Douglas Cameron, Director, Chief Engineer, Department of Fish and Game, regarding a fishing dock at Jordan Pond. Real quick, Bento Taglia four years ago actually contacted them and asked about a fishing dock at, an accessible fishing dock at Jordan Pond. And they said, yeah, we can do that. Basically that they had the money. Obviously it's not done yet. And Angela has been following up on it and Ben would call me every once in a while, ask me to follow up on it and ask what was happening. And as luck would have it, a couple of weeks ago, we found out that it's on the schedule for the fall construction season. It's actually a more ambitious plan than what Mr. Taglia asked for, so he's happy. I think it'll be good for everybody, hopefully it'll happen. Long wait, but anyways. Item 20 is an email dated June 5th from Drudge Smith, 33 Clu Street, regarding Shrewsbury Enema Hospital violating its hours of operation. Mr. Miseskar, do you address that issue correctly? Okay. Item 21 is a letter dated June 7th from Nick Repetka and Angela Snell, Highway Division Manager and Director of Public Facilities. Dick Safe, item donation, Kids Equipment Day. It's really a letter thanking Dick Safe people for the donations for the event they had at Truck Day. Item 22 is a letter received June 8th from Hannah Kane, regarding the Hannah Kane Charitable Foundation and an invitation to the 8th Annual Hannah Kane Charity Classic Golf Tournament, which I understand, Mr. Castman, is the golf part of it is full?
Yes, the golf part is full, but there's always opportunities for sponsorships if people are interested or to attend the dinner that follows the golfing. And it benefits three charities, Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, St. Anne's Human Services and the Westboro Food Pantry. It's a wonderful day of golf and camaraderie and very grateful to Representative Kane for continuing to support those three organizations.
Right, that, over the years, that's built up to quite a, quite a charity.
Yeah, for the past few years, $60,000 has been raised and shared, so each charity gets $20,000 and it's, it's a big deal for the charities, they depend on it for operations.
Item 23 is an email dated June 8th from Tiffona, regarding the fire department first responders, having been chosen as the recipients for the Shrewsbury History Award from the Historical Society, so noted. Item, item 24, 25, well, 24 through 30 are thank you notes from recipients of the Shrewsbury Scholarship Fund. If I can read my own writing. Akast, Kumar, Ethan, Nudan, Hannah, Mock, Dixie Han, Penelope, Crosby, Samath, Prashnath, Kathleen Dias. All sent thank you notes, they were recipients of the scholarships this year. And item 31 is a ZBA decision of May 23rd, 2022, Danielle Valpe for mortification of a special permit on property located at 348 South Conscion Avenue. And I believe that is it. Is that correct? Okay, then being nothing else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second, hey, motion is second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good evening.